Thank you. Turn the mics up, please. Okay, that brings us to item eight, which is item A under Old Business, which is Consider Adopting Resolution Number 2014-40, directing staff to forward the draft 2015-2022 Housing Element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD, to review. Staff report, please.
Well, at this point, it was continued from Monday's night's hearing. The only direction staff had at that point was to respond to any comments or questions that were submitted. Councilmember Miller submitted comments. I think Councilmember Lou submitted some additional comments. We'd previously had comments from Councilmembers Lou and O'Connell. So I don't have anything new to present. It's just a matter of going over whatever the questions the council might have.
Okay, council's pleasure. Questions?
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, we have all this. I've just received Terry's, and so I haven't really had a chance to read her comments, and I haven't seen Laurie's at all. And I don't know how many of you had a chance to read through mine and the responses, which I appreciate a lot. A lot of work went into that. So I guess my question is, would it be useful to have at least some short summary, either by the staff or by the people who submitted and their responses? Just a short sense of what these concerns were and how they were answered?
That's a really question of my colleagues first.
Makes sense.
Yeah?
It makes sense.
So do you want to, John, do you want to, why don't we just have John do it?
Well, I guess the only reason I hesitate, for example, with Councilmember O'Connell's responses, I had those were provided, and Councilmember Lou's were provided to them in advance of the Monday hearing. So I don't know if they have particular issues, or they were either, I mean, I can go through them all, but at this point, it's up to the council, I guess. And same with Councilmember Miller's. I don't know if some of the responses are satisfactory, and some he wants to elaborate on. I mean, I can certainly try to summarize them to the extent I can. So it really is the council's pleasure. I'm glad to do it, but...
I don't know. What might be more appropriate is, like you said, Ray, is for the council members who ask questions, maybe to re-ask the question in a public setting. And if there's something that they don't feel is worthy of the public setting, don't ask that question.
Yeah, so...
Go ahead.
So I would think that Laurie and Terry asked their questions in writing before I asked mine, so...
Okay.
They should go first.
Okay, I'm happy to delve in.
All right, we got to volunteer, Terry.
I'm happy to delve in. It was interesting, because I asked my questions before the Monday meeting, the workshop, and they didn't really get passed around, and we didn't get to that point to really discuss any of those questions. And then, once we had the discussion, many more questions came up that, you know, was, that came from the rest of the council. So one of my issues that I asked about was the inclusion of the three-story standard, or the three-story minimum density. And the answer from staff was, that's required. It was based on a requirement from the housing HCD. But I'm not sure if that's something that we have to. And then, again, minimums, but we're not setting limits. And it's hard for me to visualize what a density is if we have to go to a certain height. So I'm trying to think how this is going to fit in. And I know it's a zoning issue and a project issue when you get to that point, but I'm not sure the public or I even realize what this kind of housing is going to look like, especially on the mixed-use area, and what kind of impacts that's going to be. So is the three-story required by state law? Was my question.
No. But like, the housing element in its entirety is a document that's subject to HCD review and approval. So there may not be a statutory requirement to include a particular height limit or height number, but HCD may say to, you know, that these policies are not adequate. We would not certify your housing element based on the language you've proposed. So on the one hand, no, there's no statutory requirement, says thou shall have three stories. Our practice from the last housing element was HCD required that language of us so that they would agree to our policy language.
But even with a minimum density, we would need to put in heights. Wouldn't that come and give us more options if we did that later? I mean, if we don't know if they're not, wouldn't approve it without actual height minimums?
Well, as indicated, certainly, the council can strike that language. We can submit it to HCD, and HCD may come back in their review and say, we recommend this language be added. That's the council's policy decision.
And at that point, if the state required it, we could add that in without having gone back to review, because we would be meeting their consistency element. So that could be left out at this point, and they would tell us if they felt that wasn't adequate.
Correct.
Okay.
So we don't have to, pardon me, so we don't have to send it back and show them? How's that work?
We send this final, after the council acts, it goes back to the state for final certification. This is basically, we're getting their review and comment, then there's a process where it goes back for final certification of the state.
But we would have a chance to make those changes, once it came back from them, if it was a requirement to meet their housing element.
Within a timeline? Can you maybe describe the timeline one more time? John?
I'll let Michael take care of that.
Under the government code sections that contain the housing element, we have the statutory deadline of January 31, 2015. And then, we have a grace period of 120 days in which the housing element must be certified if we are to, if we want to keep on the eight-year cycle. So we have a statutory deadline, but we also have to build into that the fact that HCD can take up to at least 60 days to review our document. May not be that long, but it could be. So if we have a deadline of January 31, we have 120-day grace period after that to get the document in the final form and sent back to HCD for certification, if we miss that deadline, then we put ourselves on a situation where we have to go to two four-year cycles, rather than being an eight-year cycle for review of the housing element.
So let me, if, let's say, we get really strict in terms of what we're willing to respond to, let's just say hypothetical. And we know that in the past, HCD wouldn't like us to say these kinds of things, but suppose we do it anyway, and then we send it to them, and they send it back, and they say, we won't certify it because you've got such and so and so and so that wrong, or you need to add such and so and so and so. So then, if we go ahead, and we adopt something, and then we send it to them, and they don't certify it, because we haven't fulfilled their standards, that means then we're probably on the four-year cycle. Is that correct?
I would say that's accurate. I mean, yes, the answer would be yes, because you, at that point, would self-certify your housing element, and by doing that, you would put yourself on the four-year cycle. And you still then are going to have the zoning requirements that you have to do by January of 2016, and then additional zoning by January 2018. So the answer is yes. You would be on a four-year cycle, and you would still have your zoning requirements to undertake, to get accomplished within the year's period from January of 2015.
Then would you explain again, so if, you know, if we don't do any of that, you know, or if we somehow or other, you know, doesn't get certified, and we do zoning that it's different, or something that they don't certify, but we do some kind of zoning, but it isn't what they want us to do, then what happens?
Well, you put yourself at risk for someone to come in and challenge the city's general plan and housing element on the grounds that you haven't satisfied the statutory requirements. And if you don't have a valid general plan and housing element, then technically, somebody could come in and challenge that and seek a writ of mandate from the court to mandate that you do certain things.
Could also mean you can't issue building permits.
That is, that's also a potential. Again, you know, you would have, there would have to be an injunction issued and things of that nature, but it opens the door to some serious litigation, obviously.
So you feel it's risky to leave out language that we may or may not want in there, because we wouldn't be able to certify in time if they said, you need this language?
I think the more things that, the more things that HCD is going to say is not what they're looking for on the first go-round, it will take a longer review period for them, and then the council will have essentially less time to take final action on the document. So that would be my concern. You're going to have, presumably, if we get it in, you know, within a reasonable period of time, you'll have enough time to get their comments and take action on it, but you'll be up against the, up against the 120-day window, would be my concern. But no, I mean, as John has indicated, if there are, you know, if there are policies in here that you would prefer not to be in there, you can, you don't have to include them unless it's statutorily required, and many of these, obviously, are not. They're policy issues. But I think all we're trying to do is indicate that, given that some of these things were in the housing element previously, if they're not in there now, HCD is likely to say, give us the reason why they're not, and if we can't give them valid reasons, they're going to say, we want you to include it. And then the council will have to decide at that point whether it wants to include them or not.
So does the HCD typically look at a red-line version?
I don't know if they have a red-line version, but I'm assuming they are going to do some comparison between what the council has previously adopted and what is being now proposed.
And then, the other question is, I asked about if the city can designate areas or zones for rental stocks, and the answer was that you'd respond to that.
Right. The city typically, the city cannot zone for rental, as a rental designation. That's not really a zoning designation. You zone typically for density, and sort of by definition, the more dense the, the more denser project is, often, the more likely it would be to be rented. But that is the way that you get at rental housing, is by density, not by a rental designation.
Trying to read the responses to this before I waste the time of the council on asking some other questions. I think that the rest of my questions are things that'll come up in our, more of our vision for the area than for staff questions.
Okay.
Laurie?
So I had asked two questions, or made two suggestions. So in the policies and goals section, which is, let's see, program H.I.1.B., which is on page Roman numeral 6-19. This is the part that talks about the residential parking requirement, and that it says that we would revise it, program says that we would revise it to be based on floor area and/or a number of bedrooms, and right now, it's based on lot frontage. And this is something that's actually being considered by the Planning Issues Subcommittee, which is myself and Terry. And so I want to, I've suggested that instead of saying revise, since we haven't decided whether or not we're going to do that yet and move in that direction, it's still under consideration, just to put consider revision of. And I know that it's been in the last, I think, at least two housing elements, this language, but we haven't yet made the changes to the zoning regulations. So I thought it would leave more flexibility if we put consider revision of there. And then the second one is the following program, which is on the next page, page 20. This is HI1C. It says revise the parking requirements for secondary dwelling units to encourage smaller, more affordable units. And I had a question to staff about whether that was also something being considered by the Planning Issues Subcommittee. I looked for it, but I couldn't find it specifically. And it sounds like they're, looking like they're nodding their heads, yes. So I'd also recommend changing the language from revise the parking requirements to consider revision of, since those two items are still under consideration by the council subcommittee. That was it.
That it?
And now it's Ray's turn. And thank you, Ray, for taking the time.
So I submitted a number of comments with suggestions, and I got a lot of very useful responses. And in many instances, there was willingness to revise the language that was, that's currently in the draft housing element. And I guess the staff is saying, it's okay to revise this way, and for those instances, I guess we need to make sure that the council is comfortable with that as well. And in many instances, there were a number of policies, programs that had to do with using our housing money to do a whole bunch of things, like, you know, subsidize and purchase land, and buy buildings that rehabilitate, and, you know, there was a whole series of things like that. And I pointed out that this is just very unrealistic, because we just don't have that kind of money, and we'll have it in the near future. And so the response I got back was, well, but you got to have those things in there, because the HCD expects some mention of that, but they softened the language so that, let's say, you know, if we have the funds, or if the funding is available, or, you know. So there was some qualification there in a number of instances, which they're prepared to accept, I think I'm right about saying that, which seemed better than it is now. And so I was...
More palatable.
More palatable, yeah, right, exactly. I mean, I still not too keen on it, but at least the language, like, you know, gives us a little more wiggle room, because, you know, you can't promise something you can't do. And I know HCD may want us to do that anyway, but at least we ought to try our best to not be too dishonest. So I was happy with that. I'm still very concerned about the dedication of the tax increment, and there was a phrase, you know, we would dedicate all, or a portion of it, and they deleted all, so just now we just say a portion of it. And that also is consider. So that's better. Personally, I wouldn't leave it, I wouldn't put it there at all, because I think we're going to need all of it for other purposes, but if HCD says, you got to have it there, or it seems to be one of the things that the affordable housing advocates are really looking for. They seem to be, because they're going to read this, too, as well as HCD, and probably make recommendations to HCD, based on what I've seen happen in other instances. I also raised a question similar to what Laurie was raising about, things are sort of underway, but we haven't seen them yet, and that is the whole change in the parking And I mentioned that, you know, if you're going to start reducing parking requirements, you got to figure out how you're going to deal with the same number of cars, because they're not going to go away. And I mentioned the permit system, and it turns out that that's under consideration. I don't know where that's at in the process, but it's something that's, I know the Planning Commission's been talking about this for years, and I don't know where that's, when that's going to hit the council, but it's there somewhere, right?
Well, at this point of clarification, there's already a system in the municipal code, it's not a mandatory system.
Right. There is a sort of, it's one of those things, if people want to do it, that, you know, they're welcome to, and of course, from my point of view, that means it'll never happen. So we really don't, in my opinion, we really don't have a viable parking permit system. We have an idea that if people want to volunteer to do it for their block, but you know how that's going to work. So I think we need to really think about that.
Actually, it worked at Monterey Street.
Did it work once before?
Well, the process, not for, specifically for parking permits, but for putting in a speed bump and reducing the speed...
Oh, yeah.
That, which kind of was related in, so the process did work.
Well, for the speed bump, but that, you know, that's different than limiting the space for cars.
Right, right.
Quite a different matter, yeah.
But in doing it, it eventually kind of made it tougher to park by doing that.
Yeah, that's true. So I made a number of other language suggestions, and I don't think it's, the council, I don't know whether you've looked at them, but if you're comfortable with those, and staff obviously is, then I hope that we can include those.
Okay, everything that's yellow?
Mm-hmm, right.
All right.
Exactly.
Staff is comfortable with the changes, isn't, okay. And I don't have any problems.
Terry, you okay with those?
I'm okay with it, as long as, on page seven, where he's, where the changes reviewed, where it talks about the actual parcels and the mixed-use overlay, as long as we stay, I'm fine with it if that's the way the council decides to go on the actual meat of it, the actual map and zoning overlays that we're going to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you.
Yeah, this is...
My position on this is that it's not terribly realistic. So that's up to the rest of you, how you want it, because they basically are modifying the language to make it softer, but it still presumes that all of this is...
That these are the parcels that we're going to be rezoning.
Right, right.
Just a point of clarification, part of your housing element is identifying the sites you're proposing for rezoning.
Yes.
As long as we're all clear on that.
We haven't, we haven't got to that yet. At least I haven't in my mind.
Yeah, but this is...
Now, we're just talking about, you know, making the language of the policies and programs.
Right, and what I was trying to say was that if we change our wishes on which parcels, then that language would have to be changed also.
That would have to change, absolutely.
So that's, that was my point.
You're quite right.
So we'll come back to that one, but the rest of them, you're okay with, Terry?
From what I, I read them briefly between meetings, because I just received it this morning on my, well, today I looked at it after my other meeting. So I didn't see anything that offended me in any way, as far as the language.
How about you, Laurie, all right?
Yeah, I'm okay with these changes. I read the document very closely and appreciate Ray's careful read.
Moving on?
I'm in agreement with his changes.
That it, Ray?
For now.
Okay. Cliff, you have any comments you wish?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, so say, you know, so we adopt where we're going to allocate the unit, goes to the state, they certify our draft, then we go into that process of zoning, and during that process, you know, I'm just going to use the properties that are in this area. You know, say we decided to change one property to residential, and the other one, we decided we want that one to be mixed-use. So say 91 through 99, we decide we want that mixed-use, and 41 to 43, we decide that's residential. As long as we comply with the amount of units that we need to do in all the different categories, are there any issues with that?
I think practically not. Procedurally, you know, whether or not the changes are extensive enough, we technically have to amend the housing element to reflect the changes that were done. You know, that would probably be a question for the actual process. And then, if we were to amend the housing element, I presume we would at least identify the state of that change. Again, I think as long as materially, we have the same, we meet our minimum requirements, then I'm not too worried about the substantive aspect. I think there may be some procedural hoops to jump through, but that'll be it.
I'm just concerned about the, also, the four-year and the eight-year cycle. So if we did make that change, we'd be good.
I think it's the implementation issue, the timing of the implementation, so that wouldn't materially affect us.
Okay. And then, you know, one of Terry's questions, and we talked about it at the meeting before, about the amount of mixed-use, and so, and one of your responses back to her, it said that 50% is the maximum amount of mixed-use that can be applied to Rina? So that was like, one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, it's probably, whether or not it matters or not, I think it's... Yeah, it's probably, whether or not it matters or not, I think it's, it's the very low and low is the threshold of the fifty percent. Has to be in a, I'd probably flip it around and say, minimum of fifty percent has to be in single, in residential zoning only.
Standalone.
Standalone, yes. Maybe it says the same thing, but, you know, the code requirement, the statutory requirement makes reference to the fifty percent of the residential.
Okay, so the very low and the low.
The low, correct.
Okay, all right, so then, just looking at the numbers here, so we've got one hundred and eighty-one, so about ninety units and, so that, that's what we're looking at, is about ninety is the maximum that we can put into mixed-use.
That's correct, and the, if you look at what the Planning Commission approved, they're probably a little under on the mixed-use. They are a little bit under the mixed-use.
Yeah.
And that was again primarily to keep the, the density down because the sites, you could never really change it to reduce the number of sites, so they just fixed the density on the mixed-use and the number ended up being what it was based on minimum density, not, they weren't trying to achieve the fifty percent, it was more, you know, lower density in the mixed-use as low as they could keep it.
Considering the density based on the property.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask one quick follow-up question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Does the state put the RENA requirements for low and, and very low, not wanting it to be part of mixed-use because they find that straight housing is more conducive to low and very low, or why did, why would the state care if it's in mixed-use or not in mixed-use? Is it a preferred-use thing?
That is a very good question, and in previous conversations in the last housing element, we kind of poked and prodded on that. It's statutory, it's not policy, so, you know, again, we'd have to, even HCD couldn't give you a very really clear answer as to why that standard was established in statute. Again, they live like, with it, like we live with it at this particular junction.
Obviously, someone thought it was important, but...
Probably at two o'clock in the morning.
Maybe, maybe. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are at ten fifty-four PM. Entertained a motion to continue to, let's say, eleven thirty.
Go move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, reluctantly.
I was trying to get out of here.
I do have a request from Citizen, Anya Miller. So, Anya.
Yes, Anya Miller, resident. I, you know, was pretty happy with your previous housing plan and, and I thought that the whole thinking was going in the right direction as far as balancing, then needed more housing to come along the park. That was your idea, wasn't it, Cliff? And I really supported that, you know, to, to have it around a community park and, and as an interface to, or to Crocker in a, in a sort of organic way. And so I didn't really observe what the Planning Commission was doing all this time, and now I see this really different, different change of the whole thing into, going into the industrial park in a serious way and, and designating all of this housing on existing, already-built areas and rezoning, and then all this, this economic development stuff, it doesn't make any sense to me that you're taking a functioning economic development place and converting it to non-productive economically. Housing is not paying to the cities, is not good economic development for the city's point of view, whereas an industrial park, office park is. So to me, this is just really going against both how people feel the organic growth of the city should be and, and also maintaining our good productive industrial park and to have, what is it, fifty-five units in the last piece of, seventy-five units of three or four-story buildings in the middle of, of an industrial park with truck traffic? How would you like to live there yourselves? On the third floor with all the trucks going twenty-four hours a day? It's not at all realistic. And why you're proposing is, I don't understand, and I think if for some reason you've been put in this situation of against the deadline, I would take that four-year penalty and do, go back and look at what you really should be doing, like looking at the empty land that we still have, we do have. And as the person who was involved in Sierra Point at the very beginning, when we sold Sierra Point and decided against housing there, there were people who wanted housing there, and I was a swing vote to deny housing Sierra Point. While things have gone on, we're not developing that place the way we'd like to. It is time to go back and look at that. Maybe you should have housing at Sierra Point. It's empty. You have other empty land. I know you have people very emotionally attached to the, what's called, the Long Bay Shore, the Levinson and Peking Handicapped Property, and you're wanting open space. Why the whole place up to the road when you could have some housing there and still have more open space than is now in the open space plan? That property is not, only part of that property is in the open space plan. So to, to just insist on that, I really find that requires more discussion, even if some people are very much, you know, wedded to that, they must be kept open forever. You should not be wedded to anything when you have a serious discussion about where the future housing could be reasonably. So I, I really have a problem with this. It just is a total departure from previous, and, I mean, I think you should have an EIR on, on, on living in industrial park, what that would mean environmentally for those people. I, I really think you're off on this and you need more time, and so you take the penalty of the four years, your staff has to do a little more work, but I really think it's worth it. And look at Sierra Point, please.
Sure.
Michelle Sammon, Brisbane resident, I'm sorry that I wasn't here Monday night for your study session, but it conflicted with the San Bruno Mountain Watch board meeting, so I feel like I missed a chapter in this long war and peace story that I've been reading over the last decade or two. I have concerns over, over the heights of the buildings in Crocker Industrial Park. Terry, I think you did ask a really good question about why the state has a statutory requirement that low-income and very-low-income housing is not completely in mixed-use. And I think that what Michael, our city attorney, said earlier probably kind of answers that question, is that how you plan for rental property is by the level of density involved. And so if you do want to meet your low-income and very-low-income numbers, you need to have areas that are designated residential-only high-density, and that's how you're going to get people to build an apartment building where people can actually afford to rent an apartment in Brisbane. And it's, it's hard because, you know, Anya brings up a good point about putting housing in an industrial park, and which was what, that issue came up when we built the Northeast Ridge, and there was all these promises that the industrial park would be light industry and once we built housing, you know, well, you know, whatever. Just drive down the 101 between here and say, you know, Woodside, Palo Alto, whatever, and look at the corridors of housing, high-density housing that they've built along the 101 with lots of trucks and cars and everybody else going by, and believe me, those places sold like hotcakes. So, you know, I don't think that we should build on our habitat and our open space in San Bruno Mountain to satisfy the burgeoning population growth that really should be controlled. And, and you talk about what will the future be, working, you know, of, where are you going to put all the people? Where are you, what's going to be left? You know, you need some wildland, some open space, and we have this treasure that we should be protecting. And no, I don't agree with building on the Levinson property and the Peking Handicapped Property, because every time you take a chunk out of the mountain, it extends into the habitat until there's nothing left worth preserving. It's an open space instead of a living, breathing habitat that's functioning. Every species we bring through climate crisis increases the chances of our own survival as a species in the next two hundred years. And you really need to think about that when you're thinking about covering every last square inch with housing and housing and housing and housing. So I would much rather see us have, you know, maybe a higher density in an area that's already been developed than, than raping and pillaging more of the mountain than we already have. And I think that it's not always going to be agreeable to the people who own the property. It's not agreeable to the, to the other people either. I mean, like the, the property owned by the teachers. You know, that's the most likely property to be redeveloped into mixed-use that integrates with the city of Brisbane and where people will be able to get on public transportation easily, and they'll be more insulated from the truck traffic that is currently in Crocker Industrial Park. Oh, but maybe they don't want it, so we're not going to do it? Well, you know, U P C doesn't want what we want them to do either, and that's what, that's what the greater good is about for everyone. And, and yeah, maybe we do need to reconsider Sierra Point Marina since the people who are going to, you know, build things that would contribute to our economic development didn't meet their agreements. So, you know, we really do need to be smart, and maybe we do need to push the envelope with the state of California in terms of telling us what we need to do and what we don't need to do. When we were here in this last round arena numbers a couple of years ago, or however long it's been now, we talked about the issues of getting credit for open-space land, and your Open Space and Ecology Committee is working for, towards getting a priority conservation area designation for the Levinson property and changing our open space plan to include that in the open space plan. And we're drafting a letter to ask for your support of that and, and to make true the dreams of like having a demonstration dairy farm at the base of the property and making it a gateway to open space, because open space is going to be the kind of precious commodity, just like water and air, that we're not going to have much of left, especially in the Bay Area. And I think that we have an obligation to protect what is there and maybe push back on the state and say, you know what, you're going to have high-density housing at Candlestick, and you're going to have high-density housing in the city, and you're going to have high-density housing in the, in those housing corridors, you know, in South Beach and in Emeryville and some of the other really intense examples of these mixed-use, high-density areas that you all are talking about. I don't know, you should go drive through some of them or walk through some of them and see what it feels like, and ask yourself, is that what we want Brisbane Village to, to be like? I mean, I sat through that whole meeting when we talked about what economic development we wanted, and people talked about, you know, live-work and businesses versus services and, and what kind of community you want to live in and what you want this place to be. And I don't really want it to be a corridor of, of these cold stone giant monoliths with under-activated work-live spaces or, you know, mixed-use retail that no one can really afford to live in except the people who, you know, get bust down the peninsula. So I think we do need to really consider what we're doing here and what the place is that you decided that you wanted to live in. You know, I guess I didn't have much choice about deciding that I wanted to live here originally, neither did you, Clark, you know, but the rest of you did. And you came here because it was a unique and incredible place, at least I hope that's why you came here. And so that's what you really want to keep it as, and you need to fight for it. You need to fight for it, damn it, and stop rolling over for the state of California because they want to pop out more kids and pop out more population and have more people come here and more and more and more and more until there are eight billion people on the planet and there is no planet left for people at all, because we've destroyed the very thing that we treasured. So don't help us destroy the very thing that we treasured and what brought us here. Just don't do that. Rethink this plan, make it reasonable, push back on the state of California, make San Bruno Mountain and all the vacant space that contributes to the living habitat truly a conservation area. It's not a conflict with the P D area, but state what you want, you know? And if you want rows and rows and rows of these big houses with, you know, and, and big, big corridors of pop, you know, mixed-use, then move to Emeryville. They've got plenty of it there, you know? Or, or move down to South Market. They've got lots of it there. Or move over to Candlestick where they're going to have lots of it there, you know? But don't make Brisbane another one of those kind of communities. Thank you.
Hey, Michelle. All right, um, council, I guess, coming back to the recommendation about Park Lane, Park Place areas. I think where we left it the other night was, at least I heard three people that were willing to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation of one forty-five, one oh-five, one fifteen, ninety-one, and ninety-nine Park Lane as far as being twenty-six, twenty-six dwelling units, something like that, and that forty-one, forty-three, and twenty-five Park Place would be more mixed-use. And that's really, I think, the crux of what we're talking about in this whole, whole thing. We're not really planning the shopping center right now, and I know some of us indicated, you know, it'd be nice to see that whole area kind of redone for a type of mixed-use that would utilize Bay Shore the way it shouldn't. I heard some comments, you know, putting it where you could use it for transportation and align in such a way that it would be proper. So I guess the question comes down to, where do we want to proceed from here? Because everybody's question's been asked, and Ray, I mean, if you're comfortable with this stuff, this language being revised on the policy section, it comes down to the housing section, and that's really, I think, the crux of our debate. So, you know, hearing Anya and Michelle put their comments in, I don't know if that's really swayed anybody either way, so...
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Today I attended an airport land use committee meeting, and we actually reviewed or found compliant seven different cities' housing elements, whether they were compliant with the airport land use or not. And basically, we got a, a pretty bare-bones synopsis of their housing element, how many houses or units they were assigned, and some of the cities actually provided us maps on how they were going to get there, and some of them were more creative than others. And some of them were more creative than others. Foster City is taking, to get their arena numbers, are taking existing perfectly fine apartment or condo complexes and saying, well, when they get rebuilt, they can be double the density. And so they're not taking any new land for that. They're just saying, when these get rebuilt, they'll be double the density. So I think there's creative ways to, and then some of the cities are providing way more housing than they're being asked to by Rena because they want the development. The city of San Bruno has added their court, voted on their corridor by the Cal trains and, you know, they decided they go up another five stories on their downtown core area. So they, and, and talking to someone who lived in San Bruno thought they, they were voting on that they were getting five stories. No, no, they're getting an additional five stories. So that's going to be a nine story tower. And, and so looking at these things, I think there's some creative ways to get to and around what the state is requiring us to do. And looking at what we've come up with, I'm not really particularly happy with this. I would rather see the Sturs property be mixed use as it's, could be viable for. And I would rather see, you know, even if we have to go a little more dense on housing on the other, the two park, park place properties, maybe even the first Park Lane property to get our numbers. But I don't think that it should be all mixed use where that's where we're coming into. I, I spent a little bit of time last night and I just Googled mixed use affordable, affordable development pictures and affordable development pictures and looked at, you know, a hundred different buildings or designs or concepts. And I think out of the hundred that I looked at, one or two looked like they could fit into Brisbane and none of them were a minimum of three feet, of three stories. None of them were a minimum of that that looked like they actually fit in Brisbane. And, and they didn't say how much the density was or, you know, what configuration. But I think that we really need to have as much, much flexibility on and not put minimums heights and not have, I mean, the mixed use, I think, as you come into town, that's what you're going to see if that's where you make the curve is you're going to see this something that's an extra fifteen feet taller for the, to accommodate the mixed use that isn't really achieving what I vision for Brisbane. So obviously if we had talked about it and three people were for voting for the current plan, then my comments aren't going to make much difference. But I, I have to say that I think that that's a better use if we have to zone something. That it'd be better to do that.
Let me see if I got this. You're saying pull the Sturs property?
Mixed use.
And you wouldn't necessarily even have to do that, right? Because what you're saying is make forty-one and forty-three and twenty-five Park Place a higher density?
The, the two-part places, forty, the, just housing.
Make housing.
And the other, if you wanted to be mixed use, could be mixed use where it has burnage. Sturs.
The Sturs, yeah, but, but that is really kind of irrelevant if it doesn't even count towards, I mean, because basically you're just doing a plan towards arena number. It doesn't even matter, right? Would it?
I think, I think from the numbers they did the other night that they could get the numbers if it was housing only on the Park Place and mixed use on the Sturs that I think that they decided that they thought that it could be sufficient to get arena numbers.
But that was with the two properties in Park Lane also, the one oh five, one fifteen and ninety-one and ninety-nine.
Well, I think, I, I don't think it was necessarily that way. They were playing with numbers and I see them over there whispering, playing with numbers again.
I'm just trying to understand your proposal, Terry.
I, I, I mean, I'd like to see our, our commercial area stay commercial and, and I don't really want to come in and see.
You're saying eliminate Park Lane altogether, just leave it alone?
Mm-hmm.
And then pack everything into Park Place?
But I don't think, I don't think that mixed use particularly is a good use for Brisbane. Where we have, there's, you know, if, if you guys are, if people are dead set on mixed use, it can go into the Sturs. We've got the, the possible mixed use or retail where the village is. I mean, we don't have that much population to support small service industries. They're building a giant mall that everything you could ever hope to desire to buy is going to be available at Candlestick. We're not going to be a destination.
Mixed use could be, you know, or like I think somebody part, pointed out could be, you know, artist lofts and stuff like that too, where they would live work, live work businesses. It doesn't necessarily mean retail, so. John, you guys have an idea?
Do you want, you want to talk about the numbers?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, Terry, Terry's making a proposal here and I'm trying to understand it, so I think.
Well, if I under, if I understand it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, talking about changing the Sturs property to mixed use, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And then changing the Park Place properties to residential only.
Right.
And then either including the Park Lane or not including the Park Lane if needed? Is that what I'm?
Well, I would, i- i- if it needed to have some of it, I think it could be achieved on the first parcel, the ninety-one, ninety-nine.
Okay, we'll do the numbers on that.
Because if you eliminate the mixed use on the Park Place, that can be denser.
I mean, Park Lane?
Yeah, and that's what we did, we did look at on, on Monday. It was going to be twenty-six units per acre.
Can I, can I, 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 I'm sorry to just lead an hour. Is there something we can pull up on the screen or Sherry, could we swap, swap seats? Just so we can kind of get a, a snapshot of what we're looking at here.
Yeah, we can pull something up.
There you go.
There you go. So that's what we looked at the last time.
The number.
Yeah, I thought you had one oh five, one fifteen at thirty, ninety-nine and nine, ninety-one to ninety-nine at thirty. Then twenty-five and forty-one through forty-three at twenty-six. And then the rest of the, the numbers were in mixed use for one twenty-five Valley. So would you plug in those numbers now? That's what, I'm just going off the memory.
Yeah, I think, well, Ken will run the numbers. It looks like, and I think the numbers we ran the other night were to replace, replace one forty-five Park Lane is in its entirety. And I think, as I mentioned today, the planning commission, this proposal before you has more straight residential than the minimum. So you could actually reduce the amount. So the short answer is, again, if my calculations are right, you're looking at, if you change the Sturs to mixed use, if you were to try to absorb it in the two Park Place properties and ninety-one and ninety-nine Park Lane, you'd be looking at thirty units to the acre on all those parcels for straight residential.
That's right.
And then you.
Oh.
And then you'd be at the absolute minimum of residential only zoning. Would it be more useful to have a map up? Is, what do you?
So, so John, in this scenario, you've taken one oh five through one fifteen Park Lane off the, off the board?
And one forty-five off the board.
And one forty-five, yeah. Okay.
The top two on this.
And we'd have lots of, you know, there's lots of opportunities at the one twenty-five, at the Sturs property for mixed use. The residential would buffer into across from the community park much better than mixed use would. And the ninety-one through ninety-nine Park Lane, you know, buffers up against, towards the community park. So, or the community garden. It still might be difficult with the back of the post office there, but.
So that's, it's be thirty-two units per acre on those three properties?
Okay, so we're probably looking at at least a four-story building, right? For those two sides? That's way too, that's, that's too tall for that site. And that's what, and we talked about that and that's why, you know, we decided not to do that.
Four stories too tall, but we're saying it's a minimum of three and not putting a maximum on it and you're having a ground level with, with mixed use in it. How's the, how's the denser going to be any more dense or obtrusive, obstructive?
Okay, so, okay, so then, okay, so if we went with mixed use at twenty units per acre, is that, is that also a four-story building too if it's mixed use?
The H C D requirement was applied as the last housing element was minimum three-story.
Okay.
Whether it was residential or mixed use.
Residential or mixed use. Based upon these sizes, we could probably fit a three-story building with this density with mixed use, right? I mean, because that, that is something that, that the planning commission had, you know, was concerned about. I mean, that's, that's why they spread it out the way that they did was so that we wouldn't have these tall buildings in, in the downtown. And so, I don't know, I'm getting a mixed signal here. I'm, I'm hearing like I don't want, buildings really tall and then I want this high density. And so, I mean, there's.
Well, residential density looks much different than a storefront mixed use type of density.
It doesn't have to be a storefront mixed use. We, we, we can decide to change that if we want. I mean, I, when we do the zoning and we do the precise plan, it'll be the community working with the council to, to decide what we're, what we want to do. It doesn't, again, it doesn't have to be retail mixed space. It could be, you know, placemaker space. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna be upzoning these properties and there's, with that, there's going to be community benefit. And, you know, and, and one of the questions I asked staff was that we can allocate these sites and then, you know, get H C D to, to certify. And then when we go through the, the process, engage in the community, we can, through the zoning process, we can make changes. So, you know, in the end, we don't have to really stick to this as long as we make sure that we're covering the amount of units that we need to have. And, you know, I'd rather be working with the community to, in the end, finalizing what, what will eventually happen here.
Yeah, well, it was a community input process, I think, that started the whole thing about putting the Park Place into mixed use. And, I mean, that's one of the things that I think from that placemaking workshop a number of years ago, I'm not sure what year it was, two thousand four, two thousand three or something like that, about ten years ago.
So I have a question. So if we designate Park Place as mixed use residential, in the future, if we would decide to just zone it as residential, is there anything preventing us from doing that?
No, as long as you meet the residential only numbers.
Okay.
You couldn't go the other way. You couldn't have designated residential and then convert it to mixed use.
Right, so I'm in agreement with Cliff that it just keeps us, it, it allows for more flexibility. It doesn't pin us down to having mixed use. It just allows us to consider it in the future. And I, I, as for Park Lane, I don't see, I mean, I, I acknowledge Anya's comment and I, I, I myself, you know, I'm very, you know, concerned about taking away tax revenue from Crocker Park. I'm mindful of that. But if we're going to put any residential on Park Lane, I don't, I, I don't think that having one building at ninety-one to ninety-nine is going to look right aesthetically. It's going to just stand out by itself. I think having that whole block as residential makes it a much more cohesive and uniform unit.
Three blocks.
That street.
Yeah. And that's really kind of where we're at too. I mean, Tara, I just wanted to really kind of look at the proposal. Yeah, come on up, Michelle.
This is a numbers game that you're playing with the state of California and yet you are kind of like assuming that this is all going to get built in the next four to eight years. Well, it, it highly unlikely that it would. And I think that satisfying the numbers game with the least amount of potential impact is probably the best thing that we could do at this point because you can always change later on. And the whole idea is to be able to provide a cer, the whole numbers game is based on being able to provide low to moderate or very low to low income housing. And the one way that has been stated numerous times tonight to do that is with at least some high density units, which means those units will be built smaller, they'll be made more affordable. So if you really are interested in housing the people who need housing, then you would go for this and it would be a reasonable thing. And you would have mixed use where mixed use should be. And you can have your maker spaces in the industrial area, easy walking distance from where your housing is. But, you know, the idea of some kind of maker space mixed use is a little bit horrible. Have you ever lived in one of those places where the person downstairs is building something all night long?
Which is an example of a public use.
I understand that. But, you know, on the one hand, we're either talking fantasy numbers or we're talking a reality situation. So what is it going to be? You know, if we're playing the numbers game, then this looks like a damn good scenario to me. And if you are indeed planning out how you want Brisbane to be in the next four to eight years, well, that's a different story. And then you end up wiping out Park Lane and making it all, you know? But to get this level of density for only one more floor, when you're probably going to have to go four floors anyway, I think is worth it. And, and takes the pressure off for eight years, eight years where we won't, and, and the people who own the property can decide whether they want to do that or not. It's not putting a gun to their head saying, we're going to make you do this with your property. My God, you know, the first thing that would probably get remodeled should be the Brisbane Village, very, very unhappily designed at the time we designed it. So I think that you guys should really seriously consider this. Takes the pressure off, gives you eight years to think about what's going to happen out on the Baylands, gives you time to think about what's going to happen when the Olympics come to town, you know? And doing this. doing this sets those buildings back far enough where they are not constantly inundated with the truck traffic and the traffic on Valley Drive that Anya's worried about. And, and they are kind of banked up against Quarry Road, where they won't have the same kind of visual impact they will smack in the center of downtown. I think it's a really reasonable, and if we had to do it, feasible, feasible solution to the problem of satisfying the state of California's unreasonable demands on Brisbane. That's my opinion.
Michelle.
And as for the eight-year requirement versus four-year, I, I, I think we should definitely try as hard as we can to make the deadline and stay within, you know, to get that eight-year, um, deadline, you know, set, because, you know, like Michelle said, a lot can change in eight years versus four, you know, it gives us more time to look at what happens at Sierra Point and other, other areas in town. And it's, it's a huge burden if we have to do it again in four years.
Yeah, unfortunately, Ray, I mean, your point's been that, God, they're asking so much stuff that's just not reasonable, and it's not, you know, not right, and it's, you know, not even doable, and, but it's kinda using the analogy that we're playing their game on their field with their rules, and we can't change them, and that's, that's the unfortunate thing, and, uh, you know, I, um, you know, I think we're all sensitive to that, you know, that, uh,
Well.
unusual situation.
I think that if we go with the, the Park Place being higher density residential only, you don't have to provide parking for the same level of use with, that you have with, with some sort of mixed use. And they, you have a chance of actually building smaller, denser units that can be affordable, if that's what we're really going for.
I hear what you're saying, Terry, I mean, 'cause you're, on one end, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying. Because this is a tough one, I am, I'm assuming Ray's, you're still in the position you were in the other day, and not, not hearing.
At some point in negotiating something that I don't believe in.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what do you con- where, where do you think the inch should go, Ray?
Well, as I said last time, I think the whole idea of even theoretically, you know, converting the Crocker Park viable business places, at least for another ten years, you know, the whole idea of playing the numbers game and, and presenting that as, you know, high-density apartment housing, it's just a bad idea. I think it's bad for the community, it's bad land use planning, um, I mean, it may or may not happen, but it could happen. I mean, they're, they're all in the same ownership, and, uh, you know, they might decide, you know, we could make a hell of a lot more money out of building apartment buildings than we can by renting out these warehouses.
They know they could make a whole bunch more money.
And they might decide to do that, and all of a sudden, we got all these huge, high, very dense residential stuff, you know, right in the middle, which is not Brisbane. Uh, and I just think it's a mistake from a form of view of the future planning of.
Where should we put the housing, we, we know that we're mandated by the state to do it, so.
And, and as I said last time, um, and, uh, actually, I agree with my wife.
I know, put him out of Leviston, and, but I don't think.
We don't always agree, but we do this.
I don't think we'd ever go there. So that, that, that's.
Where I would put it is, you know, I'd look at all the other kinds of places where we have either undeveloped land or underutilized land, and I think, or we just have to do a much more thorough investigation of all the possibilities throughout the entire city, which is what I would do. In other words, I would rethink the whole thing. I'm comfortable with the, with the mixed use here to a certain extent, you know, around the, the Old County Road and, you know, redesigning the whole area around the shopping center and so forth, I mean, that was the TAP recommendation, and that kinda makes sense to me. But I really don't like the idea of putting all these apartment buildings in place of, you know, viable, uh, very successful, you know, 'cause they're all rented, and they're gonna stay rented because of their location and their usefulness to a number of businesses, and why would we wanna do that? I mean, particularly when we have underutilized or unutilized, you know, property in other places in town that we actually could think of as, or housing would actually get built, and we could design it so that it was more appropriate for Brisbane. That's kinda how I look at it, and so therefore, no matter how you play around with the, with the, you know, the crossword here, or, I mean, the Digsaw puzzle, whatever, um, I, I'm still gonna be against it. 'Cause I just think it's wrong for Brisbane, I just don't think we should send into some, uh, HCD and then sort of set the policy direction, uh, which, which I just think is bad for our, our, our quality of the community. So, you know, and that's what, you know, we all ran for, you know, that's what we all said we believed in. Uh, and to me, it is just, uh, it's, it's contradicting that. That's how I feel.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
In interest of moving this forward, then. 'Cause we're gonna have to move it forward one way or the other.
Somehow or other.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it sounds like we have, have some options when we zone later.
Yeah.
I hate relying on later.
I, I don't think it's gonna move forward. If I go with your option, Terry, I think it's gonna be two to two, and, uh, and one is not gonna vote for it at all. So, um.
And I'll be favor rethinking, and taking more time, and so, I mean, I'll put the four years, so we end up, but then we have a better product.
Yeah.
For the community, that's my.
I, I hear what you're saying, I, I'm gonna go ahead, I indicated the other night I'd be willing to move forward with these, um, you know, I don't like the idea sucking up our industrial park. You know, I, I, it's, it's disturbing on one end, but, you know, it may never happen, it may happen, you know, as you indicated, so.
So, I mean, then why not suck up less of it?
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna go forward with it, Terry, because otherwise, we're gonna stalemate, and we're not gonna move anywhere. And, uh, I think we need to move forward with it, send it off to the HCD and get the comments back from it and, and see where it lands. So I, I, I know we're split on this, and I, we're not gonna resolve it. We're gonna be five people, because it's gonna be going back to the planning commission, and, you know, and I, I think that they spent eight months on this, John, on different meetings, and, uh, and I think I, at this point, I'm ready to honor their recommendation. So with the changes, I think that, uh, language changes in the policies that Ray made, and Lori, and you, Terry, that, uh, I'm okay with, and.
Yes, and, and, you know, I just wanna say that, that when we do the planning process with the community, you know, if that is what the community would like to see, if, if the community would like, is, has, doesn't have a problem with the higher uh, density in the taller buildings in this area, and they want to eliminate that, then, you know, then I would be fine with that. If that, in, in the community process, if that's what happens, then I'm good with it. But just right now, the, the lower heights of the buildings is, is what I think is more appropriate.
We're not getting lower heights on buildings.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, do we need a, okay, so we need a motion. All right, so, um, make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty, authorizing staff to submit the draft two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-two housing element to the California Department of Housing, Community Development, HCD, for review.
Is that with the?
Based upon, yeah, the recommendations that, um, uh, in the, the tweaks made by council member Miller.
And.
And Lori.
And there were some minor typographical comments, I mean.
Okay.
Several weeks.
All those changes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify with a aye.
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 Pose?
No.
No.
Okay. Three to two. All righty, that brings us to next item. Which is staff reports. Are there any?
Just, just one, and I'll be real quick on this. I think I got, do I have enough? I don't expect you to read this tonight, so, th- this is, um, a document that staff and the, um, Economic Development Subcommittee, Lori and Cliff, um, have been working on. It's basically the notes from your, uh, November third workshop. So if you can take a look at those over the next few days and, um, let me know if you have any issues or concerns. We had planned to come back to the council in your December eighteenth meeting with, um, not only the, the notes that you see here tonight, but also kinda outlining the different, um, kinda categories of, uh, of issues and, and kind of commencing the, the conversation around the implementation part of it. Excuse me.
Okay. Should we move on to mayor council matters? Do you wanna go to county-wide assignments or subcommittee reports? We're.
Sure.
Eleven forty-four.
Briefly.
I don't wanna turn sixty in this meeting, so.
It's your birthday tomorrow, Clark?
Yeah, at midnight.
I turned fifty-five at a meeting here, so.
And your hair is gonna just turn white automatically.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Clay, oh, yeah, Clay, 'cause it happened to me.
All right, so I can start off if you want. So first, I guess our Economic Development Subcommittee met, and we kind of discussed developing implementation strategies from the workshop that we had, and so those will be coming forward on the eighteenth, I think.
Joy retirement.
And then Health and Safety Subcommittee, myself and Ray, met on November seventeenth. We had a very productive meeting, we've talked about three issues. First was, um, we considered, um, looking at our, our current non-solicitation ordinance, which is basically when people come to your door trying to sell you subscriptions for magazines and the such, and like, um, you know, we had some, heard some concerns from the community about, um, one, weathering, wondering, we- wondering whether these people were legitimately selling items like newspapers, um, and I guess just concern about, you know, whether people wanted to be solicited in general, so, um, the deputy city attorney is going to, um, draft some language for us to review, to amend the ordinance, um, that would basically require a license to be obtained, um, by anyone who wants to sell anything door-to-door, and that would include nonprofits, like Girl Scout cookies, um, but that would be like one, one license that, you know, say a school would have to get, and then they would distribute it to all the people who are selling, just to, you know, protect our residents a little bit more, so that'll come back to the subcommittee. Um, the second, second thing we looked at was a license plate, license plate reader. I had, um, asked our, um, chief of police to look at that, because there had been a number of stolen vehicles over the last year or so, um, but it seems to have decreased, and she looked at the cost estimates, and we decided it was too costly and not necessary, because we already have access to some database where we can, you know, look and see whether there's any, um, stolen vehicles, uh, from our town in there. Um, and then the third thing, um, we looked at was, um, e-cigarettes. Um, I had asked our, um, city attorney to look at, um, considering, um, having legislation of the sale and use of e-cigarettes in town, um, a number of other cities and, um, counties of, you know, County San Francisco and, our city in County San Francisco, and also County San Mateo have put forth some legislation on that recently, and felt like since it's unregulated, um, you know, and that there's these vaping lounges and, you know, places selling e-cigarettes are starting to pop up all over the place, you may have noticed, so, you know, we felt like that should, you know, we should take a close look at that. So, um, we're still looking at that, we, um, are gonna have another meeting, um, soon, and continue look at, you know, what kinda language we would wanna, what kinda model we would wanna follow, so.
Good.
That was all, all my reports.
Any other?
One quick for the Baylands. We've had some delays in moving ahead with the sustainability plan slash framework, but I think we have got back on track. And we're starting very soon to work again with a consultant, and we have the third phase of that plan and framework to put together and bring back to the council, but I think we're finally moving ahead on that now. Right, Cliff?
Yes.
Okay, written communications, I think we've kind of addressed those.
I have one, uh, point that I wanted to raise, we talked about, Clark. I, I think full council should be a part of recognizing that we do have a problem when there are a lot of things appear on the social media and so forth about various city policies or council actions and so forth that are not correct or misinformed, or they just misinterpret, and, and then a lot of other people buy into it, because they don't know any better either. And the way it's been in the past, we've been kind of, you know, prohibited from participating in that because of the potential breaking the Brown Act. And so Clark and I were talking with the city attorney and said, so suppose we make some kind of agreement among the council that i- if there's something that, that needs to be corrected in terms of information and what the policy of the city actually is or what have you, why couldn't the mayor do that on behalf of the council, uh, in inappropriate venues? And Clark had some ideas as, as to how to do that, and so I felt that this is really important, because, you know, when we had the, the water and sewer, there were a lot of things out there that, that just weren't correct. And, and we don't wanna tie our hands behind our backs so much that we can't at least correct misinformation in some way or another, and so I was hoping that, you know, we could sort of come to some kind of procedural agreement that, you know, the mayor would represent the city, and we may wanna look, work on a process whereby if it's something that, that may be controversial, that, you know, he'd run it by us and so forth, but, but nevertheless, we give the, the mayor or the, whatever person we identify as a representative of the council, uh, to speak in appropriate venues.
The authority to respond.
The authority to respond in appropriate venues.
Now, that would assume that whoever happens to be mayor at the time would be on that social media forum, and, you know, like, I don't know if all of us are on Facebook or certain pages.
We'd respond with the response true, like the Facebook, or, or, um, you know, on the, uh, city website, you know, that, that type of thing, not, not Brisbane per se, because that's more of a, um, I don't know, I kinda liken it to, it's moderated outside of the city, and I'd rather have it, you know, on an official city website.
Okay.
Response, but not.
Now, how, how would that be, like, if it's on, a lot of the activity recently seems to be more on Facebook, on the residents of Brisbane Facebook region? So how do you get to that audience if you're posting something on the fe- on the website? I mean, I think ideally you would respond with a comment right there.
Yeah, um, personally, I was talking about.
What we talked about was that you, you would, you would make a posting on the Facebook page, but direct people to the city's website.
Okay.
Maybe put a link there to the city's website and the specific, you know, piece of information.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with you that, you know, that's where they're talking, so you got to go to their.
Exactly.
Their home, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're not going to get them.
Okay, well, I don't know if any of you are on that residence page. I know I am. I don't know if Cliff maybe.
Yeah, once in a while I'll post something, more of just informational.
Yeah, but I was, I was going to suggest that, you know, if, if there was something that needed to be said, you know, here's what the mayor, you know, come, go to the website and here's the statement, you know, I'd be happy to be the, the person to, to do that if, if you needed or somebody to do that. But I would have to be directed by, you know, by city staff and I just.
Yeah, I think it, it's just better it comes from one person.
Okay, so then you're going to have to get on.
Yeah.
On Facebook, it means.
You've got one week, Clark.
And then Terry will have to.
Rat packing on Terry. She's looking like.
Parting.
Okay, but that, that's something I guess that we probably have to discuss further.
I think it definitely needs further discussion.
Just roll it up so that we're all.
We try.
And that, but that would only be as to issues that are currently before the council. It's like someone posts something, you know, asking when a city event is taking place, you know, when is Santa Claus coming to town? Seriously, that was posted recently. Anybody could respond with that information, right? That's not a Brown Act issue, is that?
It's not really within.
Okay.
That's not a subject-mattered jurisdiction on this.
Okay.
Just don't put council member.
Right.
If we go to mid, if we go to midnight, I'm going to mandate that you guys sing Happy Birthday, so.
We've got six minutes.
Said date and time to discuss council reorganization, so.
Do we really need to do that? I kind of doubt it.
Really, okay, I mean, because we, we kind of had talked about before, we had already had our rotation set, so.
Right, that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah, I mean, is that something that you wanted to do, Terry, or what?
Well, if we don't need to have the discussion, I think that it's fine that we don't.
Okay.
Is that a roundabout way of saying I know what's happening?
We've already had the discussion.
Well, I think, I think, you know, we had talked about before that we already had our, our rotation kind of set that, you know, it would be, you know, when, when I was mayor, Terry, you'd, in the last part of your term, would be mayor and then Cliff would be next up in mayor pro tem, then Lori would be next and then Ray decides to run again and gets reelected and.
Dreamer.
Anya's looking at me like, don't put no.
Giving you the evil eye, Ray. You know better.
Yeah. Okay, all right, in that case, I'm hearing that we don't need to do it? Okay, all right, oral communication, number two, Anya, you want to say anything?
It's 10-minute filibuster?
Time's, time's up. Sorry, we're down to half a minute. Okay, meeting adjourned, everything.